All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to open up this meeting of the Alamo County Planning Commission for December 13, 2012. The opportunities for the public to access and participate in this hybrid meeting are posted on the Alamo County website, on the Planning Commission homepage, and on the Alamo County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters which comes from the public who received. Carolyn, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Missile?
Hi, here.
Ms. Firehawk?
Here.
Mr. Carizano?
Here.
Mr. Bivens?
Here.
Mr. Claybird?
Here.
And Mr. Murray?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we have established forums, so I'll move on with the regular work session. We just have one item that we're going to work on, ZTA sections 31, 32, and 33. We're going to talk about an overhaul of our ordinances. So we'll have the staff report. Or not the staff report, yeah. No, not even that again. Just have the report.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Leah Brumfield. We are here today for a work session on zoning modernization update project. It is numbered ZTA 202202. I'll give a very brief intro to the project and then hand it over to Rebecca Cobb with the Berkeley Group, the consultants that we have been working with on this project. So as a very brief recap, the purpose of the project is to, as the title suggests, modernize our zoning ordinance. The ordinance has not undergone a complete overhaul since it was adopted in 1980. We have made a number of amendments to the ordinance in those intervening 40 years, but the ordinance is in need an overall reorganization and an overall cleaning up. So by doing a complete evaluation, building back up the ordinance from the ground up, we intend to make it clearer, more user-friendly, and bring in ways that speak to the modern comprehensive plan goals, address the current needs of our residents, and update any outstanding code changes from the Code of Virginia. When this project was originally launched in early 2022, work began by attempting to create new setback regulations, streamline land uses chart. But following two work sessions in April and June, we did come to the realization that the project needed to be restarted from the ground up. So that brings us to today. Our goals today will be receiving the presentation from the Berkeley Group for the overall evaluation of the ordinance, which is the daunting 98-page document the Commission received in their packets. I know the length of the document is a bit overwhelming to just look at the numbers, but the majority of it is actually detailed notes on the diagnostic, each section of the ordinance, given comments on what could be changed and what needs to be changed and why. The other section that takes up a lot of space in that document is the crosswalk, where each section of our current ordinance is proposed to be ending up in a new reorganized layout. So since it is a lot of information to cover, Berkeley Group will be presenting their findings in two parts. Discussion after each part. So Rebecca will be presenting first the overall evaluation priorities and findings, and then the ordinance structure direction. While I am very certain the Commissioners have specific detailed input on individual sections, rest assured, we will be able to delve deeply into those sections later on in the project. Right now, we're focusing on the evaluation priorities and findings and the ordinance structure. The real work will begin with our drafted materials at our next session. So now I will hand it over to Rebecca at the Berkeley Group.
All right. Good to be here. Rebecca Cobb with the Berkeley Group. Thank you for having me this evening. As Leah mentioned, we are going to, I'll talk a little bit about kind of where we are in this phase of the project. We'll talk about the ordinance evaluation that you received, and then we'll also talk about the ordinance structure and then some next steps. So Phase 1, this little diagram, as Leah mentioned, we started back in August with this Phase 1, and we've had some investigation time. And now we're at the December work session, the first work session for Phase 1. And then you'll see, we're going to proceed through two more work sessions where we are drafting and looking at drafted material. And then we will again kind of investigate, make final revisions in June, and then also present what we have drafted to the Board prior to moving to Phase 2. So project overview, I've mentioned before, we've kind of got three buckets. We're going to do investigations, we're going to develop content, and then there will be adoption. And so for this Phase 1, we've done most of the investigation, and you all participated in some of that, and thank you for your time in that respect. And then content development, we're kind of starting with these first two items, ordinance diagnostic and table of contents is what we'll be talking about today. And then we'll move through the other items, some in this phase and some in future phases. And then adoption is a long ways down the road, but we will get there. So first, the engagement summary, and this is Appendix C of the report that you received. The engagement summary is summarizing the different groups that we spoke to through this Phase 1. And so that was community development staff, you all, who we spoke to in groups of two, and then the Charlottesville Area Development Roundtable, or CADRE, as most people are probably more familiar with. So these are some things that we heard as kind of a common thread among these groups. So just kind of some key items were that the ordinance is complex, and that's why we're here, right? Or part of why we're here. And then the application submissions is inconsistent. So we heard from staff that, you know, sometimes there's need for additional materials, same thing from you all. Need for additional materials sometimes. And even from CADRE, we heard, you know, not certain on what to always submit with different applications. Lengthy approval processes, and this is related to different reasons, some of it that you're just seeing a lot of cases, and so it's hard to get on your agenda and on the Board's agenda. Also, some just kind of internally, the steps that it takes to get through processes. And then a desire for more by right uses. And so this isn't necessarily new, completely new uses, but this was more in terms of there are currently special permits, but maybe we could make those by right with some use standards. There was also common thread about increasing density and building height in specific areas. And I think that's important to emphasize there, so not everywhere, but looking at specific areas and considering increasing density and building height, and then reevaluating the neighborhood model. There were across all three groups, some concerns and some thoughts about neighborhood model, that it's good, but what about the future for that district? So then just diving a little bit into what each group had to say, and you'll notice here the items kind of in the yellow gold are things that we can address in this phase, and the things that are in like the teal aqua color are things that we would address in future phases. So less important at this point, we can revisit those items later, but just kind of wanted to note them right now. The community development staff provide, said that, you know, we need a complete list of application requirements that should be provided in the ordinance, as well as explaining the permit processes for each type of permit. Creating a more efficient site plan process, they felt like that was a long process, and there's some efficiencies that can happen there. Some of that may be internal workings with staff, but also there's some things in the ordinance too that could be improved there. And then things for future phases, reducing administrative burden of that neighborhood model district, addressing minor disturbances within critical slopes, changing uses to buy right with use standards, as I mentioned previously, and then clarify and refine existing use standards. Some highlights from you all were require additional detail in applications, streamline the application processes, consider adding a work session prior to public hearings. One thing that I would note about that is I think we would want to make that trigger-based, because that is something that can be very useful for you all, but it also could lengthen some projects that might be fairly simple. So I think we would want to have a trigger there based on, you know, number of acreage or number of dwelling units, those types of things. And then that work session could be very beneficial prior to a public hearing. Then the other items here for future phases, modernize industrial uses, consider incentives for low-impact development, add maximum parking limits. And that is something that we've heard in multiple groups, actually, and is something that I would say nationwide is kind of changing about parking, and then address or remove height and stepback standards. From the focus group CADRE, we heard about clarifying permitting processes, reducing the details required on concept plans. And that, you know, is a little bit different than you all saying you want to have some additional detail. So that's where we kind of need to find some best fits there. I think one interesting thing to consider is that as we are updating this ordinance, we're going to be putting in the standards and the requirements vetted by you all, approved by the Board. And so that might be a reason that concept plans can have some less details in terms of sidewalks or parking, because if those standards are there in your ordinance and you're comfortable with them, then you don't have to see them with every application. Creating a desktop process for site plan discrepancies. This was, I think, a great idea in terms of, you know, when things come up with site plans and different departments, one is requiring something that might conflict with another, and it kind of bogs down the process, having to go between different ones. And so just being able to all sit down together, work out some solutions. And so having that in your ordinance as a process would be helpful. Allowing building permit process to start prior to final site plan approval is something else that can be considered during these revisions. And then future items, incorporate maximum setbacks instead of minimum. Update recreational amenity requirements. I hear that that comes before you a lot for decision-making, and then allow more by right housing options. So that is the the summary, engagement summary. And there is definitely more details. Those were just the highlights. And so at your leisure, feel free to read through that Appendix C for any additional details you're interested in. In terms of the evaluation report, there's also the Appendix A, which is the matrix, which is a lot of pages. That matrix is where we looked at the Code of Virginia in comparison to your ordinance. We were looking at Title 15.2, Chapter 22, each section. And so we've provided the section number, a little description of what that section is about, and then we classify and make judgments in terms of if you're in compliance, if you're only partially in compliant or not in compliance with that item. And when we think there's room for improvement in the compliance department, we have made recommendations, and those are in bold, so it's a little easier for you to just kind of skip through those pages to get to those bolded items. So but in the report, we also did this little synopsis of that. So Chart 1 shows the things that are or the number of things that are applicable to Alamo. So about 85% of those are applicable to Alamo. 16% are not. And then Chart 2 takes away not considering those things that are not applicable and just looks at, okay, so what are you in compliance with or partially compliant or not in compliance with? And we would say this is a passing grade. You fared fairly well, and now we have, you know, identified the places where we can strengthen. And so we're going to be looking to those items throughout this drafting process to make sure we pick those things up so that at the end of this, you're much more compliant with the Code of Virginia. The bottom chart, Chart 3, bottom right there on the screen, is the optional provisions. And so state code has several optional provisions. Not all of them are going to be suitable to Alamo County. You're utilizing about half of them, and so the other half, you know, it's just something to consider and think about if it would be suitable to implement for Alamo. So further in the report, I'm just going to go over a few of the highlights in the pages. Everything in the report is guided by what we heard from you all and staff and CADRE, as well as us looking at your ordinance and our experience with our localities, as well as best practices. And then also the Code of Virginia items. So we've kind of meshed all of those things together and made this report of basic recommendations. So Page 9, we talk about the permitting process. And so two things here to help applicants would just be simplifying the permit structure, supporting that with good definitions, clear definitions about what are these specific permits and what do they achieve, as well as having clear application requirements. That's going to help that, those processes a lot. And then streamlining with more administrative approvals. This would take burdens off of you, free up your agendas, and also help things move along a little quicker when you do that. Site plans, clearing the submission requirements, again, making sure there's a clear list for everyone to follow, and then being clear about the limits on resubmission and the ability to deny applications, reducing the length and complexity of the process as well. Page 10, districts and district standards, reducing waiver requests, allow more low-impact uses in the RA district, and reevaluating that neighborhood model district were also items highlighted in this report. Going to Page 11, uses and definitions. Incorporating Code of Virginia uses and definitions, this is one way to make sure you're getting that checkmark for compliance with Code of Virginia, just making sure all of those uses that are applicable to Alamo are incorporated. And then broaden and consolidating terms, as well as adding modern uses. You're very well that that's needed, and that's actually where this process kind of started, and we will get there and implement those things. Page 12 is talking about a use matrix, and there is an example of one on the screen. This is not Alamo County districts or uses. This is just an example, very clean, easy-to-use matrix, and something that we would like to include in your ordinance. Staff uses a matrix currently, but it would be helpful to have it in the ordinance itself. And then use standards on Page 12, adding new by right uses and having use standards when those have impacts, amending to address those frequent modification requests. So there are use standards now that are currently, you know, being asked for modifications on a regular basis, so we can again, take some things off of your docket and answer that need that's obviously there in those standards. And then integrate past zoning determinations. So staff makes zoning determinations. This is the perfect time to have those in the ordinance and become regulations instead of in the minds and in the documents floating around the office. Then Page 14 gets into some of the community design standards, streets and landscaping, aligning those with VDOT, considering native species and mature sizes. Parking include maximum parking limits, clarifying surface requirements. This is something staff mentioned that there's, you know, hard surface, but it doesn't talk about, well, what does that mean? So being more clear about those types of things. Critical slopes is something that has a lot of confusion around it, because there's lots of different types of slopes in your ordinance. And so we want to clarify the differences there and allow some minor disturbances. And then signs reduce the burden of the BZA. And so that is kind of my summary of the engagement summary and the report. So I think we can take some time for some questions and comments. I do want to talk next about the table of contents, and that's where I'm really looking to get your feedback and kind of your buy-off. I would ask for your questions and comments to kind of be prioritized. And so if I can have things first that are relevant to permits and processes, because I think those are most important, that's where we're going to start in drafting. And then if there are things that you have read that you feel like are incorrect from the ordinance, then we need to know those things. We're still getting comfortable and learning your ordinance, and so if we've missed something, please let us know. And then if there's anything that's in the report that you've read that you really disagree with, and if they draft something like this, I'm going to be really upset, then let us know those things as well. But happy to answer questions for a bit. Take your comments.
Okay, well, I know I have a few, but you want to just go left or right for comments on my left. Fred, you want to start?
Sure. Thanks. Thanks for all that helpful information. I just had a few questions and maybe a couple of comments mixed in. One is at the beginning, you talked about the sources of input, right? This group, CADRE, et cetera. And then you had a slide that had like tan color on the top and then different colors on the bottom, and I think you said that you were prioritizing the top ones, right? How did that decision, how was that decision made to, for example, not prioritize disturbance of critical slopes? Just pulled that out as one.
So it's not about not prioritizing at all. It's about the phasing. So the gold items are things that we can address in this current phase. The other items are things that we will address and revisit in other phases. We've got a while. I don't want to
Part of this
Yeah, I don't want to spend time hashing those things out when they are a year or more away.
That's good to know. I just wasn't sure if it was part of this process or not. That's great. At the beginning, you also mentioned there'd be an open house. Who will be part of that open? It was on your racetrack diagram. Who will be part of that open house?
So we will be giving the open house with staff. The date has not been set yet, but probably this week soon, because we do want to hold that in January. And it's going to be to inform the public, let them know about the phasing and kind of our intention with this project.
Okay, so just to comment on that, I'm sure you'll do this, but you know, we've talked about public engagement, community engagement, just making sure that that's robust, as robust as possible. So reaching out to groups that are applicant groups, right? People that would want some say in this, and just encouraging you to do that as comprehensively as possible.
Yes, we will. We are working with the Alamo Engagement Staff, as well as in this phase of the project, we are creating an engagement plan. And we're going to be sharing that with staff and fine-tuning that to, yes, hopefully be robust throughout.
Great. Awesome. And then last comment is one of your main themes was to help simplify the site planning process expedited. And I know there are some things that the county can control and others that you can't control. So you've got VDOT, you've got RWSA and others. Has, what efforts are being done, if any, and maybe I'm suggesting they should be if they're not, to include those groups in this process so that you can together, you know, you don't end up with a great county policy that then ends up being completely logjammed by something that VDOT's got going on or another organization.
Yes, and we do want to consider those other departments. They are a big part of those approvals, and we will do that through the drafting.
Got it. And do you anticipate any of them might change some of their processes as part of this? Is there an opportunity for that?
I don't think so.
All right. That's great. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Hi there. So if I could just ask for, before I use my time, if I could ask for a word insert on page. The word, the sentences other on a, there aren't page numbers. It's under zoning analysis. It was, it's on sort of district and district standards. At the end of, at the end of the first paragraph, it goes, border percentages include challenges with stepbacks for building heights, encroaching setbacks for parking and accessory uses, and rigid transitional lines between high and it doesn't go anywhere. High and something. So if you could just give us what the high and something is, that would be very helpful. Um, I like the whole idea that we would go from 90 to 100 days and using that as a leverage to talk about what I want, what I saw here, and two things that I'm sort of, I'm, will ask about flexibility and the permitting and the process piece. One of the things that I've been concerned with, or have been not concerned, that's too big a word, that I've been sort of puzzling over, and particularly, and you lay it out here, is when you say that we're going to tie things to be reflective of VDOT's processes, and we're going to read, and then we're going to try and enhance our connection to state code. Okay? One of the things that I wondered about is how do we create our code, our ordinances, so that they're nimble enough to change when those things change? Okay? Or sort of backing up a piece, so that when our supervisors are engaging with their legislature, when they have those legislative conversations, that staff under OD have an opportunity to say, while this may not be a big-ticket item, this would really be helpful as we think about the planning of, and the planning and the build-out of our particular community. Because the thing that I wondered over, and particularly if you notice the gentleman who happens to be the governor right now, he's speaking a lot about accessory units, and he's actually speaking a lot about blowing up the sort of the density codes at a state level. Now, some of that is, I don't know if it'll pass in a bifurcated legislature, but, you know, he's talking about, and he's got a bunch of people who are who are aligning themselves with him. And there's also some, there's also some, I would say, some some, some headway on that, on looking at accessory units and what's the density and what's the what's sort of the setbacks on the side and things like that. And so if something that radical occurs, what would be sort of the flow-through for our ordinances to make sure that, in fact, we weren't finding ourselves not necessarily out of sync with the guy in Richmond, because that's not my concern right now. But, but in sync with the people in our community who will see that as a signal for being able to do something else, so that we're not out of sync with the reality of builders and developers is saying, well, in Richmond, they said we could do this. How is the local economy, how's the local building market going to reflect on that? And so that's really my concern. If we were in the city, it'd be a different kind of scenario, because they have a bit, they have a bit more freedom. But here, we really do need to have things that tie into the legislature. And how are we going to do that? And you're mentioning that's a, that's a key piece here. How are we going to do that in a way that allows us to be nimble and also have something that's predictable? That's really the predictability of the code, because that's really what we're signaling all kinds of things with the code. And so, well, that's not a complaint, but that is a pondering, like, okay, you say you're going to be connected to legislature, and you say we're going to be connected to VDOT, which is another state agency, and how is all of that going to sort of land in a, in a document that's going to allow it to be allow it to be both instructive, directive, and hopefully inspire people to do good building here.
So in terms of, you know, things like density or other state code things, you want to be in compliance with the state code. Sometimes that means when they amend things, you have to amend things, and so it won't be permanent. Your ordinance is not meant to sit for another 40 years, right? So it is going to, you know, continue to change. Now, there are things, though, that state code says you can utilize this, and you can decide and set those parameters. And so there's room there in those terms. When you're speaking about VDOT and other agencies, our method typically is to reference them, not to be specific about what their code says, but to reference and say VDOT has codes that has to be followed here, essentially.
Yeah, I mean, I find that, I mean, I think that's a great, I, I think that's a workable solution. I'm also noticing, and when you went to the development community, the development community wants predictability. And I also, we also know that the development community wants to sort of bring projects, to bring projects to fruition, that How do I, how do I say this? I'll just say that they want to bring projects to completion and, and they want to do it in a way that is cost effective for them. And that's also works with the community's needs. But yet there is this third element in here that it's where we take our, we take our code creation as a, as sort of a downstream. A, a down, a downstream reality of, of what happens in Richmond. And I don't, I'm trying to figure out how, how we will balance that in a way that brings predictability and. And also be neutral and neutral and to the extent that it's, that there's, there's a, that there's, that the code does not imply extra cost to get projects done.
Right. And fortunately, in terms of specific code and requirements that have to be met. Those are a little bit further down the road in our drafting. So I think we don't have to stress about it at this point.
Okay, okay, fine.
So I have a, a question before I ask a question. So I, I, I've actually read this whole thing, even the appendix A. Um, and I want, I have like just three things on there that I had questions about, but I don't know that I need to ask that. Like they were more nitpicky like.
If you want to send those in an email, that's fine.
Yeah, there, there were, or you know, one of them was like, uh, one of my comments was, wow, this would be really, really political. Do you know what happened last time? You know, so, and the other one is more like, uh, you know, what would be the mechanics of this? Because this is the situation in the county. So you know, there's, they're not necessarily work session topics. I could, because you're not drafting anything yet.
Right.
Okay. All right. So I'll just probably send those separately and copy the commission. So then, um, I, so then the only question I really have, so I like the process and everything. It all sounds reasonable. And I appreciate your work. This is a question on whether this, this is, I'm going to bring up something that's, uh, something I have concerns about. Um, and I don't know if it's part of this would or could be part of this. So, um, there is a part of our code that allows people to, through an SUP process to have special event permits under SP ten point two point two point five zero. And so basically just sort of layman's terms, if I had an old barn in the rural area and I wanted to start using it for weddings. I could just come to the county and say, hey, I've got a barn and I want to use it for weddings and it's an existing structure. And all of a sudden I can have a wedding venue, just because I have a barn. And, um, you know, we've already run into the, the, you know, all of the rigmarole around when we had wineries. And then they could have events and farm distilleries and farm breweries and all that. But this is, this to me is just sort of like one step too far. And I know that.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt. Can you speak in?
I'm sorry. Thank you. I, that's supposed to be my job to speak in the mic.
Start, start again from the beginning. No.
Okay, four score and. So essentially I, that's my concern is that, that to me, that piece of our code that people can apply for. It sort of means that like in the entire rural area, we, we, we can just turn it into a commercial event venue. And I'm, I, I really don't like this piece of code and it's something I'm, so that's my question to you is whether that's something that can be looked at.
Absolutely. And I think that's phase three or phase four. So.
Okay.
Ways away, but I've got it noted and we, when we get to that, we will definitely, um, address that.
Yeah, I guess I, you move to a rural area and you see that there's a bunch of cows and there's people cutting hay and there's goats and whatever's going on there. You kind of, you know what the rural uses are. And then all of a sudden, there could be two hundred person weddings occurring next to your house. So I just think that this is like one, a, a good intentioned piece of code, but the potential to go terribly wrong. And it's already, there's already been some controversial places in my district with this particular code. So it is not just something that could happen. It probably would. Um, all right. So that, that really was really the only piece that, and I have a long email on this. If you can send me your email, I could send it to you directly.
Okay.
I don't know that I have your direct email. I just have Leah's. Okay. So that was it. The other pieces that I had were really more minor questions for when you actually get to writing the code. So I'll just, I'll send those separate. I'll copy you guys, but it's not worth going through the document page by page.
I just want a question. Thank you for the presentation. Um, could you talk a little bit about how engagement is defined? And how do we know if we're successful in those exercises? I mean theoretically, ten people could engage and we could say, we did it, right? But could you talk a little bit about that line of thinking and how that's reflected here?
So in this first phase, we wanted to, because it's permits and processes. We wanted to touch base with those people who are most familiar with that topic. So that was kind of our, um, guide in, in this process. As I mentioned earlier, we are putting together a full engagement plan for, um, this. And we do plan on having some metrics and kind of monitoring and seeing, um, you know, are people visiting the, the webpage? How many people responded to the survey? And I think the end result too, of knowing how successful is, if we're getting information and answers that, um, we can really utilize and make changes in the ordinance. It shows that people are understanding what we're, we're talking about. And we are answering needs through those changes. Um, so I think that's one piece of that puzzle, but there will be additional metrics. And we're going to actually rely heavily on your engagement staff to help us monitor, um, and do engagement.
So, and this is more just about tone. As, as I go through here, I see a lot of things about expedite, um, or about various policies being barriers to development or barriers to, to this or that. And I think it's just, we're noting that a lot of our policies come about because we explicitly were trying to stop things from happening in certain areas or certain natural resources being affected. So the fact that it is difficult to, you know, build on a critical slope or to build on a floodplain or to do those things, those are not. Those aren't done to be barriers. They're, they're done to protect a, a resource. And so that tone, I think could use a little bit more balance. You know, and I think, you know, particularly given, um, you know, some of the things that we had with the Montclair situation. I think that, um, there's different ways to expedite. Um, I'm all about clarity. I'm all about, um, making the process easy to understand, but we don't want to, um, expedite things to the point where we are impacting the resources that the public cares about.
Absolutely. So I, I think we're in agreement there. A lot of the things, um, you know, when we talk about, for example, making uses by right, I would say make those by right with use standards. So that you are still in dress, addressing those impacts and making sure, um, you know, that process is easier. It's more maybe business friendly, but you are still addressing those impacts as you mentioned.
And I'd like to tag on to that because, um, that, you know, like I said, I wasn't going to go through all these. Like one of the things I circled in the document was, um, you made an example of FEMA. You know, our, our standards are more stringent than FEMA. And that's an example of like, yes, that's a good thing. You know, Charlottesville doesn't mind if you build in a hundred year floodplain. Uh, part of our student, she has to do with, um, you know, the aftermath of Hurricane Camille and loss of lives. And it's really actually a really bad idea to build in the hundred year floodplain. Uh, you know, I'm talking about, I'm not talking about canoe liveries. I'm talking about people living in a danger zone. So, you know, many of our houses are in that floodplain. I understand that from, because we have a historic county. But you know, you flagged that, but I would say like, I'm, I'm very proud of Alba Marl's more stringent standards. I, I hold them up as an example to other counties. Um, so I guess there's, that's an example of something where, you know, knowing the backstory might be helpful. Another one was on, um, on the mountain, you know, mountain ridge line protection. There, that was a fiery battle. They went down in a big ball flames. So there's, so doesn't mean that we can't make another run at it. But there's a whole story behind that. And so I think that being aware of why we have some things that we have to line's point that, that it's not because we don't know or we did, you know, it's be very, very intentional. In other cases, it's because we failed at something we tried to do. And you know, we need to really think that through before we just say, let's fix that, you know? So, uh, and then the other thing about the expediting, I wanted to tag on to, why it just got me all excited over here. Is that, that, you know, there's a lot of talk about what people would like, but I think that somehow, and I don't, I'm not saying this belongs in our zoning code. But we're really short staffed right now. And so, and, and you know, we, we, we don't have, you know, we can write all kinds of things about how we're going to speed this up or we can be more efficient or the website can be easier to navigate. But at the end of the day, and this is across the Commonwealth, people having, across the South even, people having trouble hiring planners. So, you know, I just, I just somehow, maybe it's in your narrative of your report, you just give some nod to that fact. Because we get a lot of pushback and why are things taking so long? And there's just literally a manpower problem.
Right. But, and I think by strengthening your ordinance, it will help with some of the, the manpower issues that, you know, someone doesn't have to receive the same application three times. It comes in once, it's clear, boom, 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 it moves through the process.
And I agree with you. There's definitely, we definitely are, I would say, dare I say, wasting some time with things that could have been done in one round versus two or three. But also, uh, to my fellow commissioners' point there, there have been times where that slowdown has helped to reveal a, a major problem with the development site that need, needed to be addressed and not sped through. So I'm all for speed. I'm all for efficiency. I'm all for less and shorter meetings. But just to be aware, so Luis.
And thank you for the report. I, I, I wanted to take some time to, I think most of my comments are probably beyond what you're specifically asking for right now. Uh, so I think there is one that I, 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 some questions and comments, um, and it's around the, the concept plan details. There's, I think you heard in your, in your, um, inquiry session, I think you heard probably some conflicting comments, right? At least that's what you alluded to in your intro. And so I will, I would like to understand what is the burdensome, um, elements that you're hearing in the, in the concept plan? Because from what we're seeing here, there's probably are a few that have probably come through as like, well, probably more detail than they needed to present. But I think that's uncommon. More than, more than likely, we're feeling like we don't have enough information for what they're asking for. And I think that's an important thing. If they're asking us for, you know, changing a, a setback or a step back or, and they're not providing us, in some cases, they don't provide us the height of the building. And so having the pertinent information from what they're asking for is, is important. And we don't always get that. So I guess I'm trying to get to what are some of the issues that they're finding burdensome in the current concept plan?
So we didn't talk about specifics. We didn't go, you know, create a, a list of that. What I would like to do is, is when I'm drafting this section, I'm going to make some comparisons, look at some other localities and see where those are, um, and make some decisions based on that and bring you some information based on that.
Yeah. And, and I would just say that I think that it's, it's, um, it's, it's, I'm not sure how we, we, we draft the, well, and actually, Mr. McDermott might be able to help. Cause I believe staff was working on some revisions, right? To the, to the concept plans, applications.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not aware of that right now, but I can get back to you.
We were told at one point that that was the case.
Charles Rapp was pondering.
Yes.
But I don't know that it had.
Whether he ever got, whether he ever got there. Okay. Cause I was going to ask, I, I didn't know if there was any movement in that and we would certainly look to see what, what was underfoot.
Well, we do know that the county during the, like the last economic downturn, the county relaxed what was required to be included. And it, it could be as simple, easy for me to say, a matter of going back to what we used to require and, and pulling that forward and saying, will we like to go back to that? Because apparently we did use to ask for a bunch of things that were very helpful.
Yeah. And, and I, I think the balance here is, you know, we could be asking for things that are completely above and beyond what the specific request is that they're asking for. And, and so that could be burdensome. It's like, well, why do I have to provide all this detail? What I'm only asking about this one thing and everything else is by writer. And so there's got to be a way that we can balance that so that we get the information for the topic at hand, for the issue that's being presented in front of us and maybe not cover ten other things that may not be pertinent.
Let, let me come alongside. So there have been a couple of times that things have, that pro, that projects have come or have mentioned to us that they'd, they'd already been before the ARB. Which led me to wonder, why are you going to the ARB before you're coming here? And there's, there had been a note on the, well, this is past the ARB as if that was the, as if passing the ARB was by default, we should sort of bow to what the ARB said. Now I realize, so you're not, you're no longer that. Okay. So let's just be careful. No, I mean, he isn't. So I have to, I'm trying to be respectful, but the, the point in that was, and I had some conversations with Charles at one point at this, is the process backwards? Should it not come here first before it ever goes to the ARB? And because, or should a package that comes out of this process, should it be ready to be seen by the ARB? Once it comes for us, I don't, and I'm not, I'm not supporting, I'm not sort of trying to lay that out, but I'm just trying to figure out that at some point I was feeling as if certain projects, and these were big projects, this wasn't sort of, you know, this wasn't the, the slew of vet projects that we got for a while. But these were sort of significant corner lots and you know, sort of on the, on the, um, uh, on the entrance corridor, to the point that I asked Charles at a point, you know, should the ARB and the planning commission at least have a work session? So we understand what we're looking at, because I had a feeling as if they were stressing things which were then being agreed to. That not only was changing the form of the building or the project that was coming before us. And therefore we weren't ever in a position to have a, what I said, a robust conversation with the applicant about that. So that's, that's by one piece that I think sort of comes alongside of my colleague here. Alongside of that is the idea that moving more items to administrative determination, which I'm fine with. However, I'm not fine with that if there isn't an opportunity for both the, the supervisors and the planning commission to have some idea about how's that going? So I think I would be resistant to saying, yes, do as much as you want to do administer, by administrative process without having an opportunity at some pre-described, there's some, uh, pre-described moment to reevaluate that and to be updated in a significant manner about what's taking place in, in the administration. So it's just not like sort of letting it go without having an opportunity or having, or having the possibility of pulling it back. Or I don't want, you know, this push pull business, but being able to, to, um, to, to re-insert the planning commission in, in that, in that process. But I think that goes to some of the things you're talking about. How do we speed the process up? Well, you know, I'm speaking to process, but I'm not, I'm not willing to let the process go.
Right.
Well, I just, yeah, I just wanted to, to, my final point on, on this, on this whole topic, which actually gets dovetailed very well into, into.
That's what we do. That's what we do.
Coming alongside. Yeah. Is, uh, so that, so there is this conflict that you heard, I'm feeling between the development, industry and, and some of the things that we were saying in terms of the concert plans and other details. So I have there been some conversation on the process on how we resolve those conflicts. And, and we can hopefully come up with, with, with something that makes sense for, you know, we can get the details that we need and the board ultimately. And, and that if there is some way that to simplify the process, you know, I don't know whether that's expedite the process, simplify the process, whatever, it'd be make it less burdensome. Have, have you thought about that? Is what process you may?
So we're not there yet. Um, we've got a couple of other articles. We will draft first. We'll probably be starting some research on that topic though, in terms of other similar localities, what they require. Comparing it to, um, your list and, and then making judgments, um, from there.
Thank you.
I add one thing to, um, since you, you came alongside your right, I'm coming alongside your left here. Couple of things that were mentioned. One is on the ARB side. I thought that was a really helpful insight. Um, and having worked on the ARB in the past, you know, what we put through the. And having worked on the ARB in the past, you know, what we put through the filter was for the most part aesthetic, right? And not so much land use related, and we were very careful to try to stay within those boundaries. But I say that and also realize that your comment about re, in reverse, it does seem like it's sort of backwards, right? Because we, you know, as an A, as an ARB member in the past, we sort of took what we were given as, okay, now we need to just make sure that it meets. And then the applicant, so thinking of all of this from the applicant's perspective. We then come to the planning commission and be like, oh, what do you mean it's not? We've already been through this process and the density is fine because that's what the ARB said. So I, I think it's a perception, really, that's really important. The other thing is coming along from an applicant standpoint, uh, or the, the development community. The fact about, you know, aligning the request with the detail is hugely helpful to an applicant, and I'm preaching to the choir here, I'm sure. But, you know, if you are making a relatively simple request, you should know as the applicant, you don't have to spend all this time and money to do X, Y, and Z. And I don't know how to exactly do that, but aligning that is really, I think, is really important and critical, and again, very helpful.
That begins with the staff level, and I think how, how the guidance are.
And I think one of those things that would be in this is, you know, yes, staff reviewing applications, having those pre-application meetings. And, and letting them know, yes, this is simple, we don't need, you know, strike this from your list, we don't need these things.
And that's, that's, I agree with you, I would just say that, and, you know, there's, there's different perception among different staff members. And so putting something in writing that is a checklist of some kind, or I don't know how to clarify that in a way that makes it more objective. Would be important, I think. Um, and then the last thing I'll just mention is, I don't see, maybe I missed it, uh, and hopefully, I'm not sure if these comments are all aligned with. This current phase, but hopefully it is, um, economic development and thinking about how that's woven into this process. You know, there's no, as far as I know, ability for developer to come in and create a ready site. That allows for future economic development to come in and be ready to go. So thinking not only from the, you know, the development world, but also the good folks here that are focused on economic development.
Okay, Lonnie wanted to make a point.
Just a couple more comments, and then I'd like to move into table of contents.
Yes, and, and so there's a lot of talk also in here, um, more, more things being done administratively, um, as opposed to coming for us. Often, um, the fact that something comes before the planning commission is the only way the public is to hear about, or really to provide input on something. As more things are being done administratively, the, the need for transparency increases. And particularly as we have performance-based standards, I think it's very important that the public be engaged in helping develop those performance-based standards. And, and being engaged in what those are, um, so that when a project does happen, um, that's next to them. So they can understand exactly why and how that got approved, um, that it doesn't just all happen in a black box.
Okay, make a quick last comment along those lines, and then if anyone else wants to comment, so we can, uh, respect your desire to have us move on. But it, I also noted, um, one of your just comments in the document was it'd be nice to have a graphic of the development process. And you had a kind of simple version there. The county does have a graphic of the development process. I find the graphic very complicated. I was, I was handed it like I could hand these to my planning students and I looked at it, I was like, oh. No, and I just drew my own diagram, but might have been wrong, but, um, so I, you know, we need something better than what we have, but just letting you know we have something. Uh, just said, just something to think about. I don't know that our county has the staff for this, probably doesn't. But some localities have engaged in a different kind of expediting, which is greenlighting. Where, you know, that we've lost a lot of our ability to acquire things, um, like onsite water quality treatment, for example. But if you do enough of the, sort of the green things in your application, you actually can get in a different pile to be reviewed faster. So I guess I would just say, not just to like, speed things up, but think of, there could be. Even if we don't have the staff capacity for it now down the road, I would love to have a developer say, wow, if you, if I do permeable pavements and a green rooftop and blah, blah, blah. I can go in the fast pile. I, you know, that would almost be worth it when you consider time is money. So I would really like to start, at least start thinking about that.
Yeah, I mean, just to, to back you up on that, I mean, one of the things on the National Heritage Committee, when we saw. That a, you know, we had a concern about a salmonella migration from, in these vernal pool systems up on twenty-nine. And to see a, um, developer come forward and say, hey, listen, we recognize this is a problem, we'll actually build tunnels for these salmonanders to migrate, so they don't get hit by cars. And help protect these, this important habitat in Ammar County. I think, I think that helps move their process, their project through the approval process faster, because everyone recognized the good things they were doing. Wouldn't be awesome if we could. Formalize that, if we could find a way that when we have good projects, people that are going above and beyond, that we, that we have ways to greenlight them.
Yeah, it has and can't be done. Another Virginia locality.
Let me even sort of pause something else. So we see, we see a lot of, um. Daycare centers here that come back for five more students. I, I'm not talking about, I love salmonella, tasty and all that stuff. But, but my gift is that we spend a lot of time saying, well, we have twenty, could I have ten? And we're looking at each other like, really? You really? And I love, you know, I would, I was a chair of a tug, Chuck Kistner for a long, long time, so I love Chuck Kistner. But I don't think staff or this body, and I can't dare to speak for the board of supervisors, but if I could. Need to have to deal with the whole idea, may, may I have a five more, five more seats in my daycare center? That seems like everything that it took to get that to us could have been, could have said yes over there. And so there's a whole host of things, I would never dare to say the higher self towers, because I know I'd probably get roasted on one.
Well, you can talk about the offset, the six inches of additional. Cell tower that's seventy-five feet tall, then you can't see this.
But there's a whole host of things that I think it would be actually fine to say, please do it so that you can get done, it can be done, not. And, and deal with some of the more serious things, what are we doing for the environment, like when, things like that. So there's a bunch of stuff like this, it's like, do we really need to? Do we really need to deal with that?
And we will, um, address those things, a lot of those things that. That you're mentioning, um, are in the engagement summary and have been mentioned, um, while we talked to, to you all and to others. And so those are on our radar, um, and will be part of the process when we get to uses and use standards and those types of things. But I would like to move into the, um, proposed table of contents for a bit. If we've got time at the end, we can certainly revisit and have additional conversation. But in the proposed table of contents, and this is appendix B, I think. Of what you were, of the report that you were given, um, and it has two parts to that appendix B. There's the proposed table of contents, and then there's also a crosswalk, and I will, um, talk about both of those for just a bit. So article one and article two are, um, things that we're actually getting ready to start drafting. So these are the first two articles, um, to be drafted and the first two articles that are proposed in your ordinance. And so article one is, is kind of, um, a lot of state code items, as well as article two follows state code. But it establishes your authority to have a zoning ordinance and a zoning map. But we've also included things about the interpretation of the regulations, as well as the trans, transition from your current ordinance to the new ordinance. How that will, um, mesh and take effect. And then article two is just the administration, so all of the people who, um, have their hands on the zoning ordinance the most. The zoning administrator, you all, BZA, ARB, um, are all addressed in terms of powers and duties. So addressing what state code says you can do and the timeframes that you have to do it in. Um, and then also in this article, it's going to be enforcement fees, making sure taxes and expenses are paid. You know, prior to making applications and improving property. And so then article three is proposed to be permits and applications. That will also be part of this phase, but not in this next work session. So that would be work session three with you all. We will talk about the permits, what is required, and we'll talk about the concept plans. And, um, you know, what's required to beat on those, as well as timeframes. And then what about appeals? And what about hearings and notifications? Making sure all of that is in compliance with state code there. So these three are kind of in this phase one, the next two are not in phase one, but they are article four. Which is primary zoning districts, so it's going to establish the primary zoning districts, as well as have some of the basic standards. So your lot size, your setback, building height, um, some of those simple things. And then article five is going to be overlay, so establishing the overlay districts and the standards related to those. Followed then by two articles related to uses, so article six would be use matrix. You saw previously, got an example of that, so that would be for your primary districts, as well as we would address overlay districts. Because overlay districts sometimes say, yes, but, you know, you're limited to this size, or you can't do it here. So we want to capture those things, and then article seven is going to be the use performance standards. And we would, um, organize that by types of uses, as well as the use matrix would also be, um, organized and follow that same format. Article eight is community design standards. And so this are, is lighting, landscaping, walls, fences, streets, parking, loading, signs, your open space. All of those things would be in article eight. Article nine, we are proposing, um, to be kind of your form-based, um, item. So right now you have your RIO form-based code, but that might, um, in the future be expanded or applied to other areas. Or there might be additional form-based things that you want to add. So we, um, feel like there's, having a separate article for that makes it easier to amend and add things as time, um, continues on. And then article ten is non-conforming uses, lots and structures, heavily dictated by state code, we would follow that. Um, and then article eleven would be definitions. So in terms of the crosswalk, um, that is provided for you. So the crosswalk, um, shows you your existing sections and kind of a title of what's in that section. And then lets you know where we are proposing that information would be located. So it, it does two things. One, it lets you know that there's a particular topic or something that, um, you're interested in. Whether it's because you love it or because you hate it, um, and want it to change, then you can know, okay, this is where that's going to be addressed. It's going to be addressed in that article. And it's important to note that when we are proposing this location, it does not mean that that specific text is going to be right there. It means that that topic will be there, and we may be, you know, cleaning it up just to make it a little more readable. It could be that we are changing standards based on comprehensive plan policy. But it gives you a guide of where, um, we're planning that to go. There could be some shifts in that as we get into drafting. Sometimes we do realize, oh, this is talking about something a little bit different than we, you know, first realized. Or this would be better served, better organized in a different area. So I would say it's not written in stone, but it does give you an idea. It also serves for us as a guide when we're drafting to make sure we're not missing items of your text. Cause we get to the ends of projects and someone, you know, says, well, what about this section right here? Where is it? And so this is a way for us to track that when we're drafting those sections, making sure we're capturing everything that should be there. Um, and then making, um, obvious decisions about, you know, in, in informed decisions about. Do we change it, edit it, completely take it out? Maybe it's not relevant anymore, those types of things. So a couple of other highlights related, um, to the proposed ordinance and the crosswalk, as you'll notice, the format is a bit different. Your ordinance currently has articles and sections, and we are proposing articles, divisions and sections. We just feel like this makes it a little bit easier to find what you're looking for, as well as, um, do amendments later on. Add things in later on. Your definitions right now are kind of up at the top, article one, section three, we're proposing to, to put that at the end. Let your, your meat be up there, everybody find exactly what they're looking for, and then if they have a question about a term, they can go to the end of the ordinance and find that. District regulations, your article three, we're actually going to be splitting up and parsing up a bit. So article four, as I mentioned earlier, is kind of establishing those districts, establishing kind of the, the main district regulations. And then those community design standards, the sidewalks, parking, landscaping, those things are going to be in article eight. And then article nine is that form-based, um, code item. Procedures, your article four, we are splitting into the article two and article three. So the article two is about the procedures of, of you all and the zoning administrator and, and how you act, um, your duties. And then article three is all about the, the permit processing. So that's just kind of some highlights, and now time for more discussion. I would like to kind of go from this discussion is to, to get a sense if you all are okay with this layout. Realizing that, yes, we haven't even built out the sections yet, you know, that's going to be determined as we draft. Some divisions might change around titles or things like that, but generally speaking, do you think this table of content, contents makes sense? So having a consensus of that, uh, by the end of the discussion would be great.
Mr., does anyone have any?
I just have one question. So, um, a while ago, I think it was Leia took us to this exhibition, there's, there's this exercise of redoing definitions. You know, I, I guess it was a couple of years ago, because I think I wasn't.
Yeah, there was a bunch of definitions.
I'm looking, I'm looking, I need to put my glasses on, make sure I can see. You did do, have us do that, okay, bye. So, I would hope that we're not going to redo that work, because it was good work, we spent a good amount of time doing that. And so hopefully, unless there's some aberrant definition, God forbid, um, that we can use those sets of definitions. As done. Or as done as far as anything gets to be done.
Probably close to, to done. There may be some things that we realize need tweaking as we change things. And so we do want to have those in mind, um, but good to know. Thank you for letting me know that, because we certainly don't want to spend more time and bring it to you, and you say, we already did this.
Well, I would just look over there and say, didn't we already do this?
We did a lot, yeah. I still want to know where all the Dan Talls are in Ammar County.
Oh, you haven't been to them? Part of the county, but if you lived in this part of the county, you'd be dancing all weekend.
All right, do tell. Anyway, Lonnie, did you have a comment, or are you just looking wise? Okay. So I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't have any strong opinion about the table of contents, as long as you can find stuff and it's well structured.
I mean, I do think it's important to sort of set up first, he, here's who has authority to do things. And then, and then from that authority, these sort of, these things spread from that, you know, I think it's sort of. You know, that's the, the legal piece, I mean, this is, listen, here's what you can do, and if you want to do this, do this. And if you don't want to do this, then you have to go in the, yeah, to go to your, to go to your diagram.
Well, there's, there's, uh, there's a tremendous amount of confusion in the public, like what is the planning commission do? What is our authority? They think we are the planning staff. I, I, this was this woman from Utah who called me repeatedly. And I was like, I'm not the planning staff, but for some reason she, they, they go to the website, they find the planning commission. And then, and we've worked on this and the website's been changed, but now it's actually harder to find the planning commission. Which could be a good thing, maybe that's why she doesn't call me anymore. But, yeah, I, I, there is a lot of confusion on kind of what people's roles are, and. I mean, even just, like, I got thanked this by, from some applicants or for some public members by working on a Sunday. Just, 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 you know, a couple of days ago, and I was like, well, I'm an appointed official, so I always work on Sunday. Like, it was, I didn't want them to give me credit for being a full-time staff member, putting in Sunday hour. So, you know, people don't understand what the different bodies are, and who do you actually contact? And I know everyone keeps trying to fix this, but.
And how much authority we don't have, which is why I'm very clear, when I say, yeah, we are a body of recommendation. There's a few things we have complete authority, but it's a really small lot of stuff, you know.
Well, and, and, and when people write to us, as they have just recently, with a long list of things they want us to take care of with a particular application. And they, they send us eight things, but we're only in charge, or we only are in charge of recommending about two of them. I tried to write, okay, we don't do that, we don't do this, this is what we do, this is state code, you know, but, yeah, anything you can do to help with that.
Definitely, we will do that. So I'm not hearing any, you know, move this, I don't like this here, everyone seems to be okay with what we've laid out.
Well, I did, did, I did have a question, I did see that, you, so you have that pair, you have that diagram at the beginning that says, these things were good, these things weren't good, these, you know, that, a page. Oh, I can't see the pages, because the page has got. Oh, I can't see the pages, because the page has got, got flipped off. But it's the one that says state call compliance analysis. So I was trying to figure out, sort of, when you, when I was looking at the cross, uh, when I was looking at the. What's this thing called? The yellow page, whatever that's called, the yellow stuff on the side, the, the index. I'm thinking, well, wonder which ones here, what are they talking about? Because if we're eighty-five percent, no, that's not where we were, if we're thirty-nine percent in compliance. So that should hopefully take a bunch, hopefully, you know, as a, I'm trying to get through things here. If we're thirty-nine percent in compliance, that hopefully will just mean we can just move you from here to over here. But I'd like to know what those thirty-nine percent in compliance are, so that I have a sense whether or not I need to focus on that, or I don't need to focus on that, or. Or in my colleagues say, I'm going to look at that deeply, more deeply, we seem to be in compliance. That would be helpful in trying to sort of figure this out, okay? That would be for me to spend my time, to help me allocate my time.
I would say, don't worry about that. That's my job to make sure.
Your job?
That's my job, to make sure that what is drafted and presented to you meets this, the state code. And whether that is because we're taking what's existing in your ordinance and, and just pulling it over. Or if we are adding, you know, some additional text there to make it in.
You'll have some notation about.
And so we, we will notate and say, you know, it'll be obvious, oh, this is about meeting state code, or, or we'll, you know, talk about those things.
Well, there's, just along those lines, I mean, there's at least one, if not more, instances where we're not in compliance in a sense with the state code. But we are grandfathered in.
Right.
And we're purposefully not updating that code, because the state code was crafted by people with, shall we say, other intentions. Or against the best interest of this county. So, so, so it's not a mistake, I guess, and that's the, the challenge.
And so I, I think I know, um, what that item is, but.
There's more than one.
I would, I would say include that i- in your email that you're going to send, just so that we are aware, so that we're not spending time, you know, trying to check that box if we don't need to.
Okay. And this is based on conversations with staff, it's not my surmising the reason why we don't get in compliance.
Okay.
Right. Any other comments on the table contents, I think?
All right.
Yeah.
So next steps is we will meet February, um, and we will be looking at Article One and Article Two. So that's the in general and the administration articles. They will be drafted for you to review. Um, and then we'll talk about and tweak those articles based on our discussion in February. And then January, we are, um, proposing that open house. So stay tuned, that date and time and location will be forthcoming very soon. Um, and then I do just reminders here. Our next, uh, meeting will be in the conference room instead of this room, so we can kind of have a, a little better discussion. And kind of hash things out in terms of what's drafted. And just a reminder, you know, do your homework, read the materials, come ready to, um, discuss those things. We will, our kind of objectives at the end of that meeting is to have a draft that you all say. Yes, we are comfortable with Article One, and we are comfortable with Article Two with this list of, you know, tweaks and, and edits. So, um, because then the next time, we will be meeting on a different article. So we do need to make consensus, make, um, some judgments there, and then move on to the, to the next item. So if you've got questions too, as you're reviewing things, reach out to staff, um, so that they can answer those and help expedite, um, things through the process. So.
I'm going to take my planning commissioner hat off for a moment and put on my professor hat. This is my other job. It, when you give us our homework, if you could be very explicit on what you need us to review and to what level of detail. Because, for example, I went through all, through appendix aid, made scribbles on it, but like, I didn't really need to do that at this stage. So just to tell us, like, I do want you to do this, and just really, instead of just say, like, review and come with comments. I want to know to what level of detail you want this review and, and what you're really looking for, so that I will do my homework properly.
So when we draft articles, what you will receive will be a memo that's going to highlight any of the, I won't say any. Some of the major changes that we do want you to kind of flip to and consider and come ready to give feedback and say. I realize it's a major change, but it's necessary, um, or no, this is not an appropriate major change for us. We will also, in the drafted text, have, um, editors' notes at the bottom of the page, where we are highlighting specific items. That this is a change, or this is based on state code, even if you don't like it, I'm sorry. Um, you know, so things like that, I think will help you as you review and to know, you know, where to look and, and go. Oh, I, I really am not comfortable with this. And those are the things that I will be looking for, is to come to consensus on. Okay, everyone does not like this particular item, and this is how we can change it, and, and make it so that you are a yes vote, instead of a no vote. Yeah. Right.
Do we continue to use this?
Continue to read that as much as you want.
No, is this good? Is this like a good piece of document for me to carry with me when I travel around in anticipation of homework?
You will not need that for your homework. It would be good to refer as, like, we get into other phases, so that, you know, those items that. Weren't about this phase, but we can be reminded of in a subsequent phase.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I'm good.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have more?
Not on this agenda.
Oh. Okay.
So as far as I know, we are done with this portion.
We are.
Well, this is the only thing that we eat. We could take public comment on any of this, but that, this is just a work session, and we're not adopting anything.
Okay.
So with that, I will close this meeting and we will reconvene at six o'clock PM.
Oh, we can go across the street.